Good evening and welcome to the September 26, 2016 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Baker lead us with the invocation, so if you would please stand for that and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in heaven, we give you thanks for this day and thanks for the blessings you've given each and every one of us. We ask that you continue to bless us through this evening's meeting and be with all citizens of Troy. Please be with those citizens who may need your help but may not have the strength or ability to ask you at knowing that they need it more than ever. Please be with us as we make decisions on behalf of all of us, as we come together as a body for the benefit of the city and for the good of the city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. The Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Mr. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember McCown?
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Here.
I did receive correspondence from Councilman Paul McCowen that he had a planned vacation before he knew he was going to be appointed to City Council, so I will move to excuse the absence of Councilman Paul McCowen at the regular City Council Meeting of September 26, 2016 due to being on vacation. Support. Moved by the Chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington that we excuse the absence of City Councilmember Paul McCowen at the regular City Council Meeting of September 26, 2016 due to being on vacation. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. First on the agenda are certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have four this evening. C1 is an Amber Town Center Town Homes and Lofts construction update, and I see Mr. Dennis McCowen is here this evening to give us an update. Good evening, Dennis.
Good evening. First of all, on behalf of Mr. Amber, I want to send his apologies for not being here, but he had a pre-planned trip and was unable to be here, so he asked me to attend. As you know, I've been working with him on both the Town Homes project and the Studio Lofts project. On your consent agenda this evening is a request for approval of municipal installations, which would be the water main and the fire hydrant, and that contract. We've hired Trolson Excavating, a great Troy company, to be our new underground company. As you know, we had problems with the other company on the other project, so if we can get that approved, we'll be able to do the underground utilities this winter and stop right there and then pick up construction in 2017, begin construction on that project. But that strictly allow us to get the underground utilities in while the weather is permissible for construction. But forward to the Town Homes project, since the construction season broke, we made tremendous progress. We will have the exterior of the building enclosed. It'll be roofed, it'll have the windows in by the end of the construction season, and then work on the interior finishes. Right now, all the rough work's being done. There's a lot of things going on inside that you don't see every day because it's now covered with an exterior film. And so what the plan is, is to complete all those interior renovations in the winter, which was the plan last year, except we had some problems with the contractor. So this will now, we're on our regular schedule moving forward, and that should be completed, and then completion of the entire project late spring, early summer of 2017. So the one twist, and I, you know, Mr. Miller and I and Mr. Amber have been working with ITC. The only small twist in this is that we can't work on the east side of the project right now to finish the brickwork and the roof because of the proximity of the power lines. The power has to be turned off. So it just so happens that ITC was going to turn the power off anyways because they're going to be redoing the poles. They've agreed to change their schedule to do the poles on our end first, so that means they have to turn the power off first on that side. That'll allow us to finish that side. We're rescheduling the work to go from west to east on finishing, you know, doing the brickwork and everything, because that has to be done in a comprehensive fashion. You just can't do it, and plus you've got to get the whole crew out there at once. So as long as ITC can, they're scheduled to turn off the power early to mid, at the latest mid-October. As long as that happens, we're going to have no problem finishing. You know, and we're committed to getting the building enclosed because we have to in order to work on the interior during the winter. So we've made tremendous progress since the construction season started. You've seen it every day. Mr. Amber's been out there every day. The construction crews have been out there every day. So it's just a matter of, you know, pushing forward and working through the ITC issue, which we've done, and I want to publicly thank Mark Miller because without him, I don't know if it would have happened this quickly. And we want to thank ITC for their cooperation in turning off the power and rescheduling their project. So that's where we're at. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McCowen?
And I do want to say one thing. We are already getting calls on the Town Homes, and I don't want to, you know, we've had enough issues, but I don't want to, I think that's going to fill up pretty fast. There's been just a lot of interest in the Town Homes since they've been going up, so I think that speaks well, and a lot of those people have been getting calls from our residents of Troy. So what we said is that people in Troy want to maybe have different options, and part of what your master plan and agenda is for the city is to provide those options. That looks like it's happening.
Good to hear.
Okay.
Thank you for the update. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
We do get questions, as you know, about the progress, and it's nice to hear.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is C2, which is a presentation of a donation to the Troy Public Library Youth Service Special Needs Collection, and I will call on Kathy Russ, the Library Director, to give us some good news. Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening, Mayor Slater. Good evening, City Councilmembers. With me here tonight are some members of the fabulous Troy Lions Club, and you may remember Barb Myhale.
I do.
Who was a former city employee, so I'm going to turn this over to Barb.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Lions Club International is the largest service club organization in the world. Its 1.4 million members in more than 46,000 clubs are serving communities in more than 200 countries and geographical areas around the globe. Since 1917, Lions Clubs have aided the blind and visually impaired, championed youth initiatives, and strengthened local communities through hands-on service and humanitarian projects. As part of the Lions Club's International Centennial Celebration to commemorate its 100th anniversary, Lions Clubs around the world are working to help more than 100 million people and complete legacy projects that make lasting contributions to their communities. The Troy Community Lions Club was founded and has been supporting needs of the Troy area since 2009. The residents of this community have been incredibly supportive of our fundraising efforts during our annual White Gain Week. Additionally, the employees of the City of Troy have generously donated to our club proceeds from their Casual for a Cause Days. Tonight, we are honored to be able to give back by donating to the Troy Public Library Special Needs Collection in the Youth Services Department. This donation will allow them to expand the offerings for visually impaired children and their families. We are very happy to present to Kathy Russ, Library Director, a check for $2,500, as well as a beautiful plaque to be hung at the library.
Thank you.
Yours. Is it beautiful? So this will go in the Youth Services area, oops, sorry. This will be hung in the Youth Services area by the Special Needs Collection, and we will get to work tomorrow putting this to good use. So thank you very much, Lions Club.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you to the Lions Club. Thank you.
Kathy?
Can you do a picture?
Picture.
You can do it out there? Okay.
They want to take your picture outside.
While we do my presentation first, then we'll do it when we'll be up.
That would be good, yeah. Thank you. As long as we have you up here, Kathy, the next presentation is C3, and I'll let you explain the Troy Public Library Endowment Fund, and I know you have a special guest with you also.
I do. I would like to ask Mr. Doug Teetz to come up. So, the Troy Public Library Endowment Fund launched last Monday, September 19, at 10:30 in the morning, and I am pleased to report to you that we are already at $3,500 towards our goal of $20,000 by the end of 2016, so we are a little over 10 percent of the way there. So that is wonderful news, and we've had some very generous donations. The purpose of the Endowment Fund is, well, there are many purposes, but the first is, I just want to have something that will help the future of the Troy Public Library. I believe so strongly in the Troy Public Library and its mission. It has a special place in my heart personally and professionally, as you know, and I just want there always to be, as long as there's a Troy, I want there to be a Troy Public Library. I also think that the fund can be used at some point for some potential capital enhancements and some prestigious programming, like bringing big names to the library and really giving the community some, whether it's Stephen King or, you know, some renowned speakers, and bring that level of education information to the community. So those are just a few of the purposes of the fund, but I need to make sure that you know, I had the idea to do it, but none of it would have been possible without this gentleman right here, Mr. Doug Teetz. He made it possible. He helped me. He got it going, got it going really fast, so I want to give Doug a chance to talk about his part in the Troy Community Foundation.
Thank you. Good evening, Doug.
Good evening. The question is, what kind of city do we want to live in? And I think the answer is an optimistic, unifying, forward-looking city. I think the first step is supporting the library and opportunities like that. This Endowment Fund will be around long after I'm in the grave and long after we're all in the grave, and supporting the good things that go on the library right now, and I encourage citizens or residents to look at their checkbook and say, hey, did the library help my kids? Then we go to the library, do we go to the library now and consider cutting a check? Because that's what makes our city great, when people are generous, and I think this is a great opportunity for our entire city, and the Troy Community Foundation is delighted to be a partner, so, thank you.
So, each one of you have a packet of information because I know you want even more than I've been able to tell you about here tonight. I don't want to take up all your meeting talking about the Endowment Fund, but if you have any questions, you know where to find me, and I'm more than happy to answer anything. There's information in the packet about the donor wall, and we would love for all of you to have a really large book on our donor wall, so if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer, or I'll be at the library.
What was the total that you've raised so far again?
We've raised $3,500.
Well, I'd like to say that you've raised $4,000 because I'd like to donate 500, and I'm willing to match up to $500. I'm calling it the Councilmember Challenge. If a council member or city staff, by December 15, I'm willing to match up to 500 more.
Thank you.
You are very welcome.
Where's my red marker to draw on that line? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
It's expensive to be on council. I don't recall it happening when I was on council, so thank you very much.
Well, we have that on tape, too.
That's what we call a double dog there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Edna. That's very good. Just, as long as we have Doug here, Doug was the catalyst to put together the Troy Community Foundation, and I just want to applaud Doug Teetz for having the initiative to put that foundation together. It's turned out to be quite a board of directors that we have for that foundation, and without Doug's help with the foundation, it wouldn't be here today. So I want to congratulate Doug and thank him for what he's doing for our community.
I think we all want to give back in our own way, and I think this is a great way, if you're sitting at home tonight going, oh, you know, I sure am appreciative for all the things Troy has done for me and my family or my business. TroyCommunityFoundation.org, you can learn how to donate there or just send a happy, encouraging message, because I think that's what makes our city great, not because of this road or that road, it's because of the people that live here and the people that give back, so, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, $4,000.
Really good night for the library.
Next on the agenda is C4, the Fire Department presentation with a brief overview of our newly formalized mass casualty incident response, and I see Fire Chief Dave Roberts is here to give us an update on this. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I will make this very brief. I'm here to briefly describe how the Fire Department has completed a benchmark, so to speak, by developing a response procedure, as the mayor indicated, for multiple casualty incidents. First, I want to emphasize that this is not intended to supersede the city's emergency operations plan, rather it is intended to provide a defined protocol to acquire the necessary resources to help handle a multi-casualty incident in Troy should one ever occur. It could, however, be implemented in conjunction with the early stages of a mass casualty incident or in support of the EOP, depending on the circumstances. So what is the difference between multi-casualty and mass casualty? The Oakland County Emergency Medical Control Authority is a governing body that oversees EMS in Oakland County and defines each incident type as shown here. The distinction between the two does not alone lie in the number of patients or the extent of the damage, but rather the type of resources needed to deal with the situation. A multi-casualty incident can occur under a variety of situations, as shown here. Oops, I'm sorry. Active shooter, explosion, hazmat incident, multi-vehicle traffic collision, or a natural disaster. Any of these situations, depending on scale and complexity, could easily overwhelm our EMS resources. Our immediate focus, therefore, is preparing for a more likely occurrence of a multi-casualty incident, such as a multi-patient vehicle crash, something that could happen like on the freeway, for example. Through a mutual aid agreement with surrounding departments and agencies that can come and help us if that situation occurs, by having an established response protocol, multiple departments and agencies can provide resources without depleting their own supply, depending on their own availability. Collectively, enough resources can be assembled to handle the incident. How do we do this? We do this through Mavis or the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, more specifically through agreements with other fire departments in Oakland and Macomb County, as well as cooperation from private EMS providers throughout Oakland, Macomb, and Wayne County. Shown here is what's referred to as the Mavis Medical Box Alarm Card. This spreadsheet lists the departments and agencies who've agreed to provide us with mutual aid when requested, so these typically aren't agencies that we call unless we really need the help, again, when our resources become overwhelmed and we can't keep up with the demand. Each alarm level is a predefined level of response to handle the emergency. As seen from the enlargement, these local fire departments and private EMS providers are called upon to provide advanced life support resources to Troy when the incident is upgraded. So as emergency responders arrive on scene, they assess the situation, they determine how serious it is, how much resources are going to be needed, we upgrade it to the next alarm, which brings in more help. The Fire Department will be called upon to provide any necessary extrication or rescue or support with patient handling. Bringing so many outside resources together requires management and coordination. Our recently refurbished mobile command post, pictured here, is designed to support these efforts on scene with communications and a controlled work environment. Standing outside on the freeway trying to manage all of those resources at night or in the wintertime with all the noise, it's not really conducive to be able to track and do all of that, so our mobile command post really makes that a lot easier for us. So what's next? We anticipate training our firefighters beginning in 2017 to provide them with a basic level of competence and familiarity with patient care and patient handling to assist EMS as needed at either a multi-casualty or mass casualty incident. While we certainly hope multi-casualty or mass casualty incident doesn't occur in Troy, if one were to occur, we believe that we're becoming better prepared to handle that, and we'll continue to work on that, so we'll be able to assist when needed. I said it would be brief. That's a real brief summary of where we're at with that, and if there's any questions that I can answer, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from Council? Those would be a good idea. Thanks for doing that. There are no carryover items or public hearings this evening. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents or businesses. There are no postponed items this evening, so we will move to regular business. I1A, Board and Committee Appointments. The first is mayoral appointments. I do have two for the Global Troy Advisory Committee that I would like to appoint Zaida Mohiden for the term that expires 4/30/2018, and Ricky Young, the student for the term to expire 7/31/2017. I will move those appointments.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we appoint to the Global Troy Advisory Committee Zaida Mohiden for the term that expires 4/30/2018, and Ricky Young, the student for the term that expires 7/31/2017. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Thank you to them for volunteering to be on that important committee. Next, I would like to appoint Claire Hale to the Planning Commission as the student representative for the term that expires 7/31/2017.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we appoint Claire Hale to the Planning Commission as the student representative for the term that expires 7/31/2017. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you to Claire for volunteering for that position. There are no City Council appointments this evening, so we move to I2, what are Board and Committee nominations? I have four nominations for the Downtown Development Authority that I would like to move this evening. First, I would like to nominate Dennis Bostic. Second, I would like to nominate Rebecca Chamberlain-Krienga. Third, I would like to nominate Lawrence Kiesling for the at-large position, and fourth, I would like to nominate Alan Kerlik.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, that we nominate Dennis Bostic, Rebecca Chamberlain-Krienga, Lawrence Kiesling, Alan Kerlik to the DDA for the terms that expire 9/30/2020. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll call upon Mayor Pro Tem Pennington for a City Council nomination.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I have a question for City Clerk Dixon. Is the, when Mr. McCowen was appointed to City Council, was he automatically resigned from the Zoning Board of Appeals, or has that happened yet?
He did submit a resignation letter.
Okay. So with that in mind, I'd like to move the nomination for the Zoning Board of Appeals, Dan Agawis.
Support. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we nominate to the Zoning Board of Appeals, what's the name again?
Dan Agawis.
Dan Agawis. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes the nominations for City Council, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I3, there is no closed session request this evening, so we will move to I4, a budget appropriation from general fund balance, local and major road slab replacement and asphalt overlay. I see Kurt Ovene, City Public Works Director, is moving to the microphone.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. With Deputy City Engineer Bill Huttery is up here in case there's any questions. You know, I think Mr. Teetz is correct that good roads is in all that make up a good community, but I think it definitely plays a major part in what separates us from our surrounding communities, and you can see from this map above, since 2012, we've had almost a $52 million investment into our road infrastructure, which is, by far, extends anyone in this area with what they're doing, which really separates Troy from the surrounding communities. Some of the things that have been approved in this current-year budget was a $4.1 million appropriation for local roads and some major road activities. Some of the activities that are already completed is the, or incompletion process is the John R-15, if you travel that, and most of the, or some of the, local roads are also completed. This is an example of what's going to be completed in spring of 2015. This is up in the northwest corner of the city. This is something that Delicio Contracting has already completed. This is a before picture, and then you have the after picture, so you can see the impact that this has into our local roads. What we're asking tonight is an additional $2.6 million for the road infrastructure, with a large emphasis to continue on the local roads. Some of our biggest challenges at DPW, when we go into the local road system, is having residents call, can you just go that extra 100 feet? You know, mine is not, or mine is worse than what you're doing, can you just get mine? So we're faced with that challenge daily when we go into the local roads, and this appropriation would allow us to go that little bit extra where we have residents calling this fall. Some of these examples is Hammond, although Hammond would take a little additional coordination because this is a school route into Costello Elementary. This is an example of River's Edge, where you can see that ASR is deteriorating the concrete. So when you look at it in its totality for this year, pending your approval for the additional $2.6 million, you can see that the large impact in the local roads we'd have this year, with most of it being completed by the end of the construction season this year. What this does is, again, continues the emphasis on local roads, addresses those residents' concerns and demands that we hear daily, and it really takes advantage of the current-year pricing with Delicio. Last spring, Council approved a two-year extension with Delicio Contracting, and July 1 of 2017, we'll see a 3% increase, so this allows us to take advantage of today's current pricing. So again, when you look at that in totality, you can see all the different colors up there. There's a large
We have a big election turned out this year, expected in November, and there's never enough election workers. You can't have too many. Maybe this will be the year, but if you do have the time, the interest, the talent, we could use your services. If you go to the city clerk's website, you can find out more information. Next training session is October 4. High school students 16 or older are still eligible to volunteer, or, and I think it would be a great thing to add to your NHS resume. So I encourage all Troy citizens who are able to do so to help out, serve your community in this fashion.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Next, our reports. Any comment from council on the reports in the agenda packet this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is no closed session this evening, so thank you for coming this evening. We are adjourned.